Okay, where do we go?
It's kind of funny, we just slowly watched the attendee number go up.
Do you have to take the waiting room function? And let every single person in, or can they just arrive?
Yep, the floodgates just open and here we go, so.
Hi all.
All right, the attendee number looks to be holding steady. Rachel, if you want to go ahead and kick us off.
Yeah, you betcha. Hi there, everyone. It's wonderful to have you. Thank you so much for taking time out of your evening to join us for the District Three LPA Town Hall Meeting. We, everyone on this call, we are officially the Guinea pigs. This is the first of each of the district's town hall meetings. So we'll be excited to hear your feedback on how this process went and how we can make it better for the future town halls coming up. It's interesting, I was thinking about this, this particular town hall and I think it was three or four years ago perhaps, a few of us back when we used to be able to ride in cars together, drove up to Peonia for this E2 Engage Conference that was hosted and it's really kind of looking at innovation in the energy sector. And one of the presentations at the time was DMEA and they had just launched their, their new broadband initiative broadband to the home. And it was really inspiring and innovative, cutting edge at the time. And I think on the other hand, seemed like their business model was going to work for them. And I remember a bunch of us scratching our heads around that and we're obviously very interested in it. And when asked kind of what the key to success was and kind of the vitality and the vibrancy of that project, they said it was member engagements and making sure they had built up over a long time, really effective and strong ways to communicate with their members, not just about electrons and bills, but really about kind of how the owners of this cooperative, you all, really felt we could best serve you. And I think that really sparked a conversation within the board and certainly I'm sure it was an ongoing conversation within the staff. But how we could step up and really do a better job engaging you all our membership. And I'm excited to say that that conversation sparked much work from there, including our member engagement strategic initiative. All kinds of efforts around transparency, things like recorded meetings, raise your hand if you've watched one of those, very entertaining. All the way through some finance campaign publications and other pieces. And I think this town hall meeting is just one additional extension of our effort to really learn from you and listen to you, share what we're doing and hear your thoughts. So thank you again for joining us. A quick snapshot of this particular town hall, as mentioned, we're really hoping for a kind of a dialogue, a two-way exchange. But we're going to ask you first, hold your questions for a little bit. We're going to start off with a quick round of introductions of who all is on the call here from both the board and LPA staff side of things. And then we will move into a power supply presentation that Vice President Dan Harms is going to be giving us to really help give some background and catch everyone up on what's been happening as we look at the future of our power supply at LPA and kind of what our next steps are. And then we're going to open it up for a round of questions specifically around power supply and try to move through that following up by just open Q and A. And hopefully, we're hoping to kind of wind things down around 8:20 because it's the witching hour. And so if you hang in there until 8:20, that's when we bring Hillary back on and she does the magic door prize drawing. So hopefully we'll have things wrapped up by 8:30, but if the questions keep flowing and people are tired of it, I guess we can, we can keep going. So, um, let's see, with that, I'll just introduce myself briefly. My name is Rachel Landis. I am one of your humble directors here for District Three. When not on a Zoom call for LPA, I tend to be on Zoom calls for other endeavors. I do a lot of work in the sustainability field, really looking currently at food systems in our regional food system. And I think while serving on the LPA Board where I really am excited and have been excited to work is in the member engagement side of things as well as really pushing for solid strategic planning and some of those pieces. So I'll pass it along and Joe, do you want to say hello and give everyone a little intro?
Sure, excuse me, I'm Gerald Lewandowski. I've been on the board for about a year and a half. And some of you might recognize my name from telling all of you to take down your bird feeders. You still need to take down the bird feeders during bear season. I work for Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And so why don't we go around the horn and Drew, why don't you give yourself a quick introduction and then Jessica?
Sure thing. So I'm Drew Tammerman, Vice President of Information Technology. And so all the, all the technology at LPA keeps me busy.
I'm Jessica Matlock, the CEO, and I've been here for a year and four months. I don't know how many days, but it's been a pleasure to be back home to Colorado.
Awesome. Thanks all. Britt, do you want to say hello?
Hi, I'm Britt Bassett. I'm the current President of the Board of Directors. And I appreciate Rachel very much stepping up to chair this to save my voice for tomorrow's board meeting. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Britt. Let's see, Hillary, you're the next square in the Brady Bunch screen here.
Hi, everyone. My name's Hillary Knox and I'm the VP of Communication and Member Outreach.
Awesome. Thank you. And Dan, do you want to jump in next?
Sure. My name is Dan Harms. I'm the Vice President of Grid Solutions. So I get to play with the power supply things. That's what I'll be talking here today about. And our job is also to make our grid work as efficiently and smoothly as possible.
Awesome. Thank you. I do love that title. Oh, and now for an even better title, Nadine. Want to say hi?
Hi, Nadine Otterferos, VP of People and Culture, and I get to work with all the incredible people at LPEA.
Awesome. Thank you. And you all have amazing titles. I'm just biased to people and culture. All right, Carl, you're up.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carl Ramsey. I'm the VP of Finance, which doesn't sound nearly as exciting as people and culture. I'm not sure why I look so dark. It seems very bright where I'm at, but I assure you I don't sit in the dark. It is really short. So hello.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and let's see, before we head off.
One more, Jerry.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Jerry. I didn't see you in my squares.
Quite all right. Evening, everybody. I'm Jerry Sutherland, VP of Operations. If you see our guys out working late at night, say hello, wave from.
Awesome. Thank you, Jerry, and thanks to your team for all they're working on and doing. Um, before we dive into the presentation, I wasn't sure, Britt or Joe, did you all have anything else you wanted to add in terms of a welcome?
No, I think you've covered it from my point of view. It's nice to see. I see that we have 34 attendees now and that's, that's really good.
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few things. It's been really impressive to watch LPA staff over the last, gosh, eight months now, dealing with the COVID situation. Staff has kept the lights on, worked with customers and really haven't missed a beat in all that time. A few things that really jumped, jumped out at me is that as the COVID set in and we knew there would be some economic hardship, staff brought us a proposal to help out members who either couldn't pay right then or lost their jobs or had some other situation. And we've helped 300 members pay their bills over these months. And another 1,500 we've worked with closely to give them an extended payment, payment period. And the customer service staff has really done a great job. They've listened to some really tough stories. And I just really want to let you all know that the LPA staff has done a great job. During that time too, Carl and Jessica helped the staff sharpen their pencils and they've cut about $2 million out of the budget. And that is no small feat and, but very needed at this time and, and done in great cooperation. One of the things that I've been asking about is, are everyone seeing the fires in California? And, and the co-op has spent about $750,000 this year in tree trimming. And that's such an important thing to do now with our forest dry and keeping that fire danger down from, from our lines and member and member connections. And the last thing is the, again, the staff and the International Brotherhood of the Electrical Workers, which is LPA's Union, which actually makes up about two thirds of the staff of LPA, have engaged in something called the Code of Excellence. And basically they got together and said, if I've got a problem with you, I'm going to tell you about it. And if you've got a problem with me, you're going to tell me about it and we're going to work together to work these things out. It's worked out to be a great partnership. There is a video up. Some of you might have seen it if you get LPA's Facebook and emails. And maybe towards the end, Hillary, if there's a chance we could flash the URL up of that video. But it's talking to management and the IBEW. And having grown up in Detroit, which is a union town and a bunch of, having grown up around a bunch of union folks. When you have union people telling things are pretty good, they need it. Union guys don't say things are good when they're not. So again, LPA staff has been doing just a tremendous job and we know they'll keep on. So you see them, I'm a burrito or something.
Like the burrito plug. That's awesome. Thanks for sharing that, Joe. I think it's really awesome to just kind of call some of those hard won efforts out. So thank you. For, unless anyone else has anything to add, I think we'll kind of step into the. Let me see. Oh, we'll just bump into this next phase of our town hall meeting, which really is hopefully bringing folks up to speed on what's going on with our power supply situation. As many of you know, and as kind of our local press has covered, we've been taking a really hard look at our power supply and where we may head in the future, especially as we look at achieving our clean energy targets and some of our cost targets and some of our goals and commitments around local, local control and local economic development. We certainly do not have all the pieces of the puzzle put together yet, but we have definitely been working really hard and diligently. You'll hear this echoed over and over again, but we have committed to looking at three different prongs or strategies for how to move forward. And I have been, it's been quite a game of chess and a juggling act to try to keep all of those moving forward at the same time. But it's been a pretty remarkable feat to, and I'd like to acknowledge it is happening. So Dan's going to give a little bit of a presentation of why our power supply is important, what options are currently on the table. And as we look at those options, what the major drivers of our decision-making are and what our next steps are. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dan, the Vice President of Grid Solutions. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Rachel, and bear with me while I get my screen shared here and start this presentation up. So everybody should be seeing our title screen for the power supply presentation we've given here today. Yeah, first off, welcome, everybody. Welcome again. It's great to see so many familiar names over there on the, that are participating and joining in on this. And I talked to you about what our power supply looks like now and looks like, hopefully look like in the future. You know, the purpose of this is to give you a little more information than what you maybe have today. Hopefully we answer some of the questions that you have with the presentation. But certainly if we don't cover a question that you have, feel free to ask it at the end of this and we'll make sure we can get as many of those answered as we can. Right? So why does it matter where we source our power? You know, why is it such a concern of ours? Why are we focused on that? Well, I'm going to give you three good reasons here as to why we're looking at this so carefully right now. One, and maybe the most obvious one is our cost. You can see on this pie chart that our cost of power is a very large portion of our overall expense that goes to serve you as our members. We buy, you know, we, 64% of our expenses are actually to cover what we purchase and then re-deliver to you. The rest of those expenses, of course, is getting that power to your front door. And so LaPlata Electric spends nearly $72 million a year and from our, for our wholesale power supply that we purchased from Tri-State right now. The second reason is local control. As you know, LaPlata Electric is a cooperative. It's your cooperative. And part of that is local control. We want to hear from our membership. We're guided by our membership. Our membership elects our Board of Directors and that's just, you know, the part of our, of our blood and in it, in everything that we do. And so we want to make sure that everything, including power supply, is as local as it can be. And if we have that local control and the freedom to build those programs that our members want, we can better serve you as our members. And so that's why local control is such an important aspect of what we do. And as you can see here in our vision statement, it's one of the highlights there is the trustworthy community partnerships. Building that innovation, forward-thinking industry leaders. All those things are, are something that we endeavor to strive for as we look toward local control, especially the power supply. So the third reason is sustainability. At LaPlata Electric, we now have a carbon goal that we established a little over a year ago. And what we are striving to achieve is that we can reduce our carbon footprint from power supply by 50% from 2018 levels. And doing this while we keep our costs in check. Some people ask, well, why do you pick 70% of your cooperative peers? Well, that's because that's where we are today. That's where we are. We serve electricity to our memberships that's less expensive than 70% of the other Colorado cooperatives. And so we just want to keep it that way while achieving these carbon reduction goals that we have. And so how are we going to do this? Well, if we look at the left pie chart, that's our generation mix today. Right now we buy 95% of our power from Tri-State. And if you look at how that gets split up, a large portion of that is coal. Today, that's 50% coal, 25% renewables from Tri-State. Then we have 5% renewables that LPA is allowed to do inside the walls of our own service area. Then Tri-State also serves us with natural gas and some diesel fuel as well. That all goes into the generation mix that we use to deliver to you our members. Well, we certainly want to get, get better on the carbon content of all that. And if we're going to meet our goal in 2030, we have to have achievable steps along the way to be able to reduce that. Well, one of those things that we can do, and this is something we've identified as an operational goal amongst LPA staff, would be to install renewable generation by gaining additional flexibility from Tri-State to do so. And we're figuring if we can install about 50 megawatts of solar capacity, then we can increase that LPA renewable piece of the pie to a, to a full 18%. And of course, that reduces the other pieces of pie just because we're buying less from Tri-State if we're generating it ourselves locally. So that's one step along the way and then we're hoping to hit within the first five years. So we get asked a lot of times, but aren't renewables so much more expensive? Isn't it a more expensive way to go? Well, you know, I'm here to tell you that that may have been a way of thinking in the past, but it's no longer what it is today. Renewables have certainly made strides in reducing their cost to where it is definitely a low-cost resource of today. What this chart here is showing is that over the last 10 years, how much solar especially has dropped. It started off at $359 a megawatt hour. Now, a lot of times in the industry, we talk dollars per megawatt hour, which you might be more familiar with is cents per kilowatt hour. Because that's what you pay on your electric bill. Today, you pay approximately 12 and a half cents a kilowatt hour. Well, 10 years ago, solar was 35.9 cents per kilowatt hour. That's how you'd convert that. And look at it today. It is much lower, down to four cents a kilowatt hour or $40 a megawatt hour. And during that same time period, coal has actually increased in cost. And that's because of all the, a lot of the environmental requirements that it has and just the cost to maintain and operate those facilities. And one outstanding thing, by the way, this information comes from a third-party source. And there's several of them out there that you can find in research and all of them come to this, to the same conclusion. And I think one outstanding thing that has certainly surfaced here lately is that now the cost of solar has become so low that it actually is less expensive than it costs just to operate, operate alone, the coal plants. And so although this graph is showing the combination of both, the cost, the cost to install and operate the generation, really solar has become very economical to install. And this is even without the, any kind of tax incentives or subsidies. This is, this chart is charting unsubsidized cost trends right here. So what are LaPlata Electric's power supply options? Well, let's first go over what we have today. Our power supply options today are that we buy 100%, 95% actually of our, of our purchased power from Tri-State Generation and Transmission. That's what the GNT stands for. And we have a provision in our contract that allows us to put in 5% of our own generation. So this contract is set to expire in the year 2050. So it still goes on for quite some time. That's why we're looking for flexibility here and now. And that's our goal is to increase that flexibility through a variety of different options that we're looking at that we'll go over here pretty soon. As I mentioned, that there is 5% of local generation that we do have a provision for in our contract, but we'd certainly like more than that. Today, we have actually maximized and capped out that 5%. And so for us to add any additional renewable resources to our system, we'll have to gain that extra ability to do so, which brings us to a lot of the endeavors that LaPlata Electric has been working on lately. And as I mentioned earlier, if we can add that 50 megawatts of solar, that added to the 5% of the flexibility that we have now would bring our total renewable energy up to about 18% provided locally. So we, so what is our energy mix today? Right now, as we looked at that pie chart, it's about 70% fossil fuel and about 30% renewables. And as long as we can keep adding those renewables, we'll keep increasing the renewables percentage and reducing the fossil fuel percentage. So we've certainly been chasing a three-pronged strategy, as Rachel mentioned earlier. You've probably heard of this before. I know many of you on this call today have been at our board meetings. You've heard about our three-pronged strategy before. And so what that entails is that we are pursuing, first off, more flexibility under the existing contract from Tri-State. So we're looking at ideas and methods and ways to expand that 5% and get more flexibility to put in some of the local renewable generation we'd like to install. The section, the second option we've been pursuing is we've been working diligently with Tri-State along with Tri-State's other members to pursue and establish a partial contract agreement. And what that would allow would be for the member utility to provide a certain percentage of their own generation, but still be a member of Tri-State. And so it'd be a mix of the two right there. While the third option that we're pursuing is a full buyout from Tri-State. And of course, one of the first things that we need to know in order to pursue a full buyout, well, how much is that going to cost us? And how are we going to replace that power supply if we do a full exit? And that brings us to a lot of the Colorado PUC and FERC litigation that you may have been hearing about in the news. All that is to obtain that fair and equitable number so that we know what it is and how we can best chase that auction. All right. So what are the major drivers for this decision? Well, as I mentioned, buy down is part of it, but that's not the only thing. The other part is going to be the cost to replace that power. How do we, you know, what are we going to do once we exit Tri-State and have to provide our own power? And so there's lots of options for that. A lot of people think that our only option is to go buy from the markets and isn't that very volatile? You know, aren't we at the risk of paying very expensive prices at times? There's actually other ways of doing it where we can enter in for other fixed purchase power agreements. So we actually know what our cost of power is going to be for a fixed period of time, whether that be 10, 15, or even 20 years. It could be, you know, very, a very good way for us to maintain and know what our expenses are going to be. We do not have that necessarily today. The other thing we have to be concerned about and address is the transmission expense. And how do we, how are we going to deliver that power that we might be able to get from a third party and get it into our system? So that's certainly not something we want to overlook, but there's definitely solutions for that as there are already existing transmission lines into our area that we would be able to continue to use. And then the third thing listed here is what is that cost of that buy down going to actually be? And so that's obviously a key part that can be very expensive because we have a, an obligation because our purchase, our power provider has, has said that they would provide and meet our needs all the way over until 2050. And so if we're no longer going to be a member of theirs, there may be an obligation that LPA has to, to pay to have the ability to now provide our own power for that. And so those are the three things that we're definitely watching and that, those aren't the only three things. There's certainly a lot more. And we're, our spreadsheets grow every day as we add more and more factors to consider as we look at those various options. So what are our next steps? Well, there's a couple of PUC and FERC discussions that are going to be coming in and decisions that are kind of coming in pretty soon. In fact, one is as soon as November 5th, where there'll be a PUC decision and another one following that on December 9th with some FERC. And, you know, it could be early 2021 possibly where we could bid to have a portion of LPA's power supply through an open season option. We talked about that, the, the prong number two of our, of our options out there. And that prong involves a partial requirements and that is getting established. And there's actually an option for us to possibly pursue that path coming up that we are currently, currently evaluating right now and looking at all those options as well. So I think that brings us to the end of what hopefully is answered, maybe some of the questions that you already had. As I mentioned, if you have other questions, please feel free to send those in and we'll see if we can answer those for you.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Dan.
I'm going to go ahead and end my slideshow right now. If we need to bring those slides up to cover anything, then we can always pull that back up.
Awesome. Thank you. And I see questions are starting to pop up, which is excellent. So this kind of rolls us into the first of two Q and A sessions that we've got slated for tonight. And so we're hoping to spend kind of the first portion of our Q and A really focused on power supply and any questions you might have around what Dan just presented or other issues that you've been kind of pondering in the power supply bucket. Just a couple of nuts and bolts, housekeeping items here. So you have a couple of different options for how to ask your questions. So on the one hand, there's a little Q and A button that you can click on and type a question in. My understanding is that those questions, unfortunately, I don't think the entirety of the audience can see them, but the panelists can. And so if you type in a question, we'll be sure to read it back out loud so everyone can hear it and then address a question. So that's one option, and I'll ask Hillary and Drew here to kind of do some tech, tech pointing here in a second. Second option would be just plain and simple. Well, nothing's plain and simple for Zoom, but would just be live questions. And so there is another function of Zoom where you can click a button to raise your hand. It indicates you have a question or a comment that you'd like to make. And then we, on this end, are going to kind of just try to weed our way through all the written questions and all the hands raised and try to get to you. And we'll be sure to, to kind of, I guess, call on you, for lack of a better word, so that you all know what's happening. Um, we do ask that, especially for the spoken questions, folks limit your airtime to three minutes each. And just to make sure that we're giving everyone a chance or as many questions as possible to get asked. I know that Drew has the magic mute button, so if someone goes beyond three minutes, you might find yourself talking into air. So please be concise. And I think just a few other things to throw out there. Rules of civil dialogue apply here as they do in every day of our lives. So we just ask that. Questions are asked respectfully, and certainly you can expect answers to be made in that way. And that we find ourselves using family appropriate language. Um, let's see. Other things here, I guess if we aren't able to get through everyone's questions, please know that we are logging questions as they come in, and all of those are being compiled and will be sent out along with their answers to everyone on these calls, and I believe also published on the website. And with that, I'm actually going to hand it over to Hillary so she can clear up any false or slightly inaccurate information that I just gave, as well as kind of help guide everyone to where they can find their Q and As and their hand raising functions.
You did a great job, Rachel. Just, just a couple of points of clarification, because I know some of you are joining from a desktop, others probably from a mobile device, and some of you may even just be on your telephones, and it's slightly different depending on where you're viewing it from. So as Rachel mentioned, the Q and A button is, it's really only available for those of you who are on your, your desktop. You can find that at the bottom of your screen. I see six of you have already found it. That's fantastic. So you just click on that, it'll bring up a dialog box, you type in your question, and we will answer it that way. For those of you on a mobile device or on a telephone, your only option is to raise your hand. If you're on a mobile device, you just locate the more button, click it, and then check the raise your hand button. If you're on a phone, you just have to dial star nine, and that will raise your hand. And once your answer is, once your question is answered, you can also press star nine to lower your hand again. For those of you on a mobile phone, you can raise your hand by clicking the participants button in the bottom, and then clicking the raise your hand button. So hopefully that didn't make things more confusing. I see we already have some questions, so we'll just get started.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Hillary. All right, so I am finding Q and As here, so I'll just read these out loud, and then I think if we've got a particular staff that seems appropriate to answer this, feel free to, to chime in, same with Board of Directors. And if there's crickets, then I'll call on someone. So question number one comes, and I apologize if I don't pronounce your names appropriately, comes from Tamara Jocelyn. Thanks for this question. So with the population growth in our area, would Tri-State's volumes go down even if LPA went up to 18% self-generated renewables? And so I think that's referencing back to that pie chart that you were showing us, Dan. So do you want to tackle that one?
Sure. So I think that if I could reframe that question a little bit, I'm pretty sure that what that's asking is, are we going to see more than 18% growth in our area over the coming years? And, you know, is that, in other words, what we offset with solar is Tri-State just going to have to add that back to handle the growth that maybe comes to our area. Well, what's been interesting in the recent years is that although we've had consumer growth moving into our area, the efficiencies that people have done through energy-efficient appliances, insulation, and what have it, the usage per customer has gone down, so our sales, even though we've had customer growth, have actually been very, very flat. And maybe inclining slightly, so it'd be quite some time before growth would outpace that, and we'd be back up to what we'd be buying from Tri-State today.
Awesome.
And Rachel, I guess I would add the one other part of that, that LP is real interested in seeing, which is related to growth, would be the electrical vehicle revolution. If we see a lot more EV sales, then we would probably start going up in how much power each residential place uses. And then the question may become more appropriate, but if, as our percentage of what we do locally grows, well, Tri-State currently has to fill in their amount, but Tri-State is becoming more renewable. So I think that we'll all green the power supply one way or another.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's see. Okay. Next question here, and I'm trying to link them all together. This comes from Heather Otter. Heather asks, this kind of links to what we were talking about with the 18%, but just to clarify, with the options to produce our own renewables include solar sources from our state and region.
Well, I could probably jump in there and answer part of that. The renewables, solar, and perhaps wind, we hope to have additional in our local territory, and we will strive to do that. There will also quite likely be additional projects built in the Four Corners areas. There's quite a few developers vigorously pursuing opportunities in the Four Corners area. And you'll seen some of the retired coal plants are catching a lot of interest because of the land near them and the great transmission facilities that are already there. So I think it will always be some combination of where the renewables will come from. I don't know, and, and I doubt that anytime soon we would be doing 100% locally. So there will be some transition to where currently, right now, almost all of our power, except for that 5% comes outside. We hope to slowly transition to do more locally and more within our own territory and more in the Four Corners area as we move into the future.
Great. Thank you. And folks, if, maybe Hillary, if people are raising their hands, I can't pop open the Q and A box at the same time that I can look at the participant screen. So if anybody sees that, just kind of chime in and break up. Otherwise, I'm just going off typed questions here.
There's no hands raised. Yeah, I think people are shy tonight. They're just typing in, but I'll let you know if we get any.
Awesome. Thank you. And so this next question ties a bit to what Britt was bringing up and some of the thoughts about this progression towards our own local solar development and renewable development here. And the question Sam King presents is, will LPA own the 50-megawatt solar facility? And I don't know, Dan, if you want to tackle that one, we were talking about, about that yesterday.
Sure. Yeah, there's actually, Sam, there's several different options that we could pursue, and LPA owning it could be one of those. There's options like that, or there could be an option for us to work with a third party through a PPA, purchase something remotely. There's, there's several different options, but that is certainly one that we're going to be evaluating is if we own and operate it ourselves.
Awesome. Anyone else have things to add on that? Pretty good?
Yeah, I guess I would say just to expand, Dan mentioned PPAs. We use that term a lot, and that stands for Power Purchase Agreement. That's basically just a contract to buy power from some facility. Nowadays, because of the investment tax credit and the depreciation for solar and the production tax credit for wind, you have to have a tax appetite to take advantage of those. So the power purchase agreements, the PPAs, have been the most important things for co-ops like us, since we don't have our own tax appetite to own it. But as Dan says, there's certainly likelihood in the future that if it's, the numbers work out, we would, we would look into that. But probably in the near term, like Tri-State is doing with their renewables, almost everything is just a power purchased agreement, where somebody else puts up all the money to build a facility, and all the co-op where the GNT has to do is just buy the power from that, which is actually a nice way to go because it gives you, in some sense, additional financial security in the fact that you don't have to put the money upfront, and you only pay for the power that's generated by that facility.
Great. Thank you. All right, I'm just starting top down now. So Karen, Karen Pontius asks, has any progress been made in addressing the service areas where solar installations are denied due to high line voltage or other grid problems?
Thank you. I think that one has my name on it.
All over it.
Karen, yes, we've made some good progress on that. There's a couple of different things that we've done. Probably the most, the largest step that we've made is establishing a new interconnection policy whereby we're using smart and grid, or smart and burner settings. So whereas before we had to watch when solar was being installed on our system, so that even if it caused the voltage to go high just for a fraction of a day, you know, we might have to tell the customer, no, you can't put that in because it would create high voltage. But now with these smart settings, they can just back the solar array off a little bit if the voltage starts to get too high for that short period of time, and then ramp back up after that period has passed. As, as far as high voltage on our system goes, or just for clarification, I want to make sure everybody understands that our voltage is all within range. It can be plus and minus 5% nominal, and so we want to make sure that we do stay in those ranges, and so we watch that carefully. Then the other thing that has been done to, to address that concern as well is that we have four substations that we have lowered the voltage on that serves over 8,500 customers. And these are substations that might sure serve shorter distances. So the voltage maybe doesn't have to start off quite as high as some of the substations that serve really long distances. And so for those, we're able to lower it down, and only during contingency situations where we have to raise it back up. And so that has also created additional headroom for us to install more.
And Rachel, I'd like to add, for those who have gotten involved in actually trying to put solar on their own homes or stuff, they know they've dealt with LPA and gotten permission or not permission in the past, but we're now having some customers come back who were denied before because of this. And now with these new inverters, what LPA will do as part of your application and the permission to do that is they'll just make it clear to you that there will be times of the year that your inverter will curtail the power that might be generated. So now that you will know that it's, you know, you can still put the system in, but you may not get 100% all the time from that. So that was a great solution.
Yeah, Rachel, and I, I just want to add one more thing on this because it's a very important topic, is that we are also looking to the future of community solar. And I think that's important because there's a lot of people that want to install solar, but maybe they don't own their own homes. It's expensive, or it's just not a good location for their house because of trees. And so we really want to look at the option of community solar in the future. If we can get more flexibility from our contract with Tri-State, so it really, it goes hand in hand, and we need more flexibility. And then we can look towards community solar, and what that would be is that would entail someone purchasing or leasing a portion of that, of a panel. And then they would potentially get the credit back of that energy on their bill. So just want to make sure people know that we're looking to that, and hopefully that could be a future item.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to tackle this one really quick. It comes from Sergio Perez. First time attending this town hall. Well, welcome and thank you. And the question being, will Dan's presentation be available on your website so that people can review it again? And I believe the answer to that is a most definite yes. Hillary or Drew, I don't know if you have any thoughts at this point as to where it will live or when it will be up?
Yeah, I think the best, we, we have four more of the, or three more of these, four in total, one for each district. And I don't want to steal the thunder from any of the other districts by putting this out there too widely now. But what we'll do at the end of next week, the next Friday, is we will post a news article on our website, which you can access from the front page, the homepage. And that will have a link to the PDF document for the, for the presentation, also links to the recordings for each of the four town halls, and a link to the, the Q and As. So we're going to be compiling all the questions that we get at all of these and putting them together in one single place for anyone who was interested in what happened at the other meetings and/or was not able to attend. So you can go to our website and find that on next Friday.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, let's see, I think, oh, here's a kind of help us understand question. So Dan, one of the pieces that you had mentioned was kind of working through the transmission side of things. And so this is a question from Werner Hyber, and Werner is wondering, what is the transmission cost? And is it a flat cost regardless of the source and distance? And Werner, just for clarification, are you asking kind of to understand what transmissions costs are all about? Or like the actual dollar amount?
Oh, he may not be able to.
Oh, yeah. I don't know how that works. Might have to get.
So we'll just drop them in here.
We'll see if he's ready to clarify that.
Werner, he may be able to.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Both transmission cost, I mean, both answers, both questions.
Okay. You know, I'm probably not going to get into the, the dollars here right now. I don't have that in, in front of me. The, but as far as the, the trend, and will that become more expensive? It, it depends which route we go, Werner. There, there's some routes where we would continue to buy, well, we'd have to buy transmission service from somebody, and right now we'd have to get that from, from WAPA and/or Tri-State to do that. And so it's, it's based on their, it's called a NHTSA agreement. It's Network Integration Transmission Service Agreement. I think I got that. And, you know, and that's based on a revenue requirement to operate that transmission grid and our load share ratio of that. And so most likely with inflation, those expenses go up, so it's not a fixed contract like it would be for the, the purchased power that we might acquire. But there's, you know, certainly, you know, the, the other option, I know I was going to say now, is that I don't know if you're familiar with the term RTO, it's Regional Transmission Organization. And it's possible that an RTO could come in, you know, be developed in the, the Western Mountain Region that can help lower transmission costs. And so that is something that, that could be on the horizon for our area as well. Hope that sort of answered your question.
And, and Werner, it, like a lot of questions that sound simple, they can get pretty tough in a hurry. But it's not quite so tough to answer in approximation what our current transmission costs are. Because remember, we have a one, we have one bill to Tri-State, and within that bill is both a transmission charge and a transmission generation charge and an energy charge. Well, so you could roughly say our average cost to Tri-State is 7.4 cents per kilowatt hour. And of that, about one cent goes to Tri-State for transmission. About half a cent goes to WAPA for transmission, which is paid by Tri-State. And the rest, if you're writing this down, is transmission generation. So that's approximately what we're paying now.
And you expect that to remain the same?
The part that we pay to Tri-State, the one cent, would remain the same because they bring in a lot of the power to us. We would also continue to have to pay WAPA the .6 cents. So roughly 1.6 cents is kind of like what we would probably have to pay over the next year or two, no matter who our power supplier is. But the part that might change would be if, if we, the part that we have independent from Tri-State, all or partial, that would probably, the transmission demand might go down some.
Okay. So that was a good question. When you purchase it from Texas, let's say wind energy, you know, but.
Well, if you do go outside of Tri-State's area or WAPA's area, you would have somebody else you would have to pay to get it here. I have no idea of what their rates would be. I would say it's unlikely that we would want to do that, but who knows? Maybe somebody would come in and offer that kind of power to us with the transmission wrapped up in some way. I don't think we've seen that yet, though. Okay.
Awesome. Ooh, I like the talking. That's nice, like two-way town hall. Let's see. Let's see.
Werner has another question, Rachel, while he's on, maybe you want to jump on that.
Go for it. So Werner, this actually kicks us off into kind of the next chapter of this. There's a few questions lined up around it. But it's really around kind of some of those options on the quote unquote buyout approach. So some questions around what's going on at FERC and the PUC. So Werner's question here is, has FERC made a decision regarding the most recent non-cooperative Tri-State members? If not, when will they do so? Jessica, do you want to address that?
Sure. Yeah, I'll take that. So FERC has not made a decision. It takes a long time at FERC, actually. So right now they're in a procedure called settlement. And what happens is FERC asks the parties to settle the issue. And that's, that's what they typically do in these types of cases. So right now they're having settlement conferences. And so Tri-State and all the parties that have intervened. And I actually don't know how many parties there are. There's, there's quite, there's several dozens of parties that have intervened. And so they try to get all of us together and the groups meet almost on a seems like a bi-weekly basis, but I, it's probably more like once a month right now. And talk about all the issues in the filing to see if we can come to common agreement. So for example, one of those is would Tri-State be open to changing their contract above the 5%? That's even part of these settlement discussions. And so as you can imagine, trying to get almost 100 people to agree on these things is going to take some time. And I do not see a decision from FERC coming out until next year. And I don't even know depending on how the election goes, if that would change things or not. So it could be even longer than a year. So it will be a long time.
And specifically, I see Werner mentioned the non-coop Tri-State members. That's actually not a FERC thing because, well, I suppose it could be if it violated some other law, but that's a state state law thing. And the Colorado PUC is looking into these Colorado state laws regarding the non-coop. And I think the Colorado PUC will choose to decide that or not decide that. And we hope we learn that soon, but that's kind of different than FERC. If you, does that make sense?
Yeah. And actually, the co-op issue being FERC jurisdiction was actually under the Federal Power Act. And if you're a cooperative, there's definitions in the Federal Power Act that exempt you from regulation under FERC. So what happened is Tri-State added three members. One of them was, you know, like a garden and farm store. One of them was a gas facility. And then the other one was a greenhouse. And so by adding those three types of members, Tri-State lost their exemption under the Federal Power Act. And then that kicked them into automatic FERC regulation. And so what FERC did is in their recent filings, they kicked it back to the state PUC and said, state PUC, if you would like to take up the, the legality of FERC adding these three members, then you do so. So that's why it kicked back to the state PUC. The PUC will hear this case this Thursday and, or not hear the case, but they'll make the determination. They're going to do this Thursday. So we should definitely hear more very soon.
Alphabet soup. Thanks. And so here is another kind of FERC related matter, but there's a couple, couple of things tied up in here. So it's a big question. Get ready. Even if Tri-State's effort to find jurisdiction under FERC are approved and no fair and equitable price for full or partial exiting of the contract is provided, does LPA have other legal options to pursue in order to achieve our local generation goals? So a lot there. Does anyone want to take a stab at that?
Well, one part of it is just if Tri-State is under FERC and we remain under Tri-State, then FERC will eventually approve a contract termination payment or whatever acronym they use for our exit fee. So we would eventually learn what our full exit cost would be, if that's part of the question. That could be some years off, but we would eventually learn it would be another path.
Yep.
Rachel, maybe I'll add to that is that we also have the option of a, of a partial power supply path that we're looking at. That's that second prong there. And so even while FERC's deciding this and doing that, we do have a path that we could take that we're evaluating to get more local renewables into our area.
And, and even the, the first prong, so to speak, the work within Tri-State, there is no doubt that LPA has made a difference at Tri-State. We have been, I wouldn't exactly call us a squeaky wheel, but in some ways that might be the case, but along with other cooperatives as well. Tri-State is and has had to hear that. And really part of that squeakiness is meant who has been elected Colorado legislature. Our legislators have also put pressure on Tri-State. So our efforts have paid off. So even if we remain with Tri-State, we will have a little bit more flexibility, I believe, in the future.
Great. And that actually is a really great segue to Wesley Baker's question. So Tri-State has their new energy plan available on their website. They are saying they will be supplying 50% renewables by 2024. Would the board like to comment? And he put the link here in the Q and A. And I'm not sure, Hillary, if there's like chat function for all the participants, so we can pop that up so that everyone else can check in on that if they want to.
Well, I can lead it off with some comments. I'm, we're excited and pleased that Tri-State has put that plan together. Again, we'll take our bit of credit for that as well as I mentioned, the Colorado State Legislature as well. The reason that we just don't quit trying to learn what other options are is the responsible energy plan doesn't necessarily sell all the things that we've been trying for, as Dan talked about. Lower energy prices and more local control. So the fact that Tri-State is making progress on that is great. But we perhaps can do better for ourselves and our members by continuing to learn what our other options are.
Yeah. I think that's really kind of, I would just echo those sentiments. I mean, to, to see such a massive energy generation company shifting to that portfolio is just in the grand scheme of things, incredible and news to celebrate. And so very excited for it. I think also, as you all have seen, kind of trying to navigate these jurisdictional and legal mechanisms for, for trying to achieve our local control and, and clean energy goals has not been simple. And not, it's, it's costly and energy capacity finances all of it. And so, you know, if, if, if Tri-State is where we end up and remain in some capacity or in all capacities to know that they're cleaning up their portfolios, really exciting. It also looks really good for their bottom line. They have had pretty high rates that we've all been kind of contracted or conscripted into. And so to know that they're bringing in cleaner energy bodes well for those rates in the long run, as we just saw. But I agree with Britt and just I think looking for more local control certainly been something of, of interest from many aspects. But I think one of the biggest things for me that's just become apparent over the last few years is looking for a partner that you can work with, a trusted relationship, ways where you can, there's transparency in what's happening and in the mechanisms that are kind of underlying decisions being made. And I, I am, I would not have said that when I first joined this board. But it's, it's really been a learning experience and it's been striking. So that is something I'd be really interested to have in our power supply partner.
Rachel, if I could add one thing that, you know, I think all the co-ops are concerned about is Tri-State's debt. They have $3 billion with the debt and we're having a hard time seeing how they're going to pay that down and lower rates at the same time. So it is something we're keeping a close eye on.
Great. Let's see. Ooh, we're gonna kick this one to Jerry, just to get a new voice in here. And then I think we've got a whole battery of battery questions that we'll go to next. So this is from John Simpson. John asks, this is a question for Mr. Sutherland. What are the challenges for the guys out in the field if we switch from Tri-State to another supplier?
Thanks for the question, John. Nothing, nothing would change on our end. The operations group, we would still install, maintain and repair. The line's the same as we do now. Yeah, we'd go out in the middle of the night when you're out of power and restore power and middle of blizzards and rainstorms and 24/7.
Awesome. Thanks, Jerry. For this next series of questions, again, they, a lot of them have to do with stored power, stored energy. And I'll just throw this out there. If we're kind of going off in a direction that doesn't really hit on kind of the intent of your question and/or if there are pieces in that response that sparks some, some additional need for clarification, feel free to use that hand raise function and we'll try to, try to get you queued up there. So let's see, this next question comes from Brendan Trimbley. Has LPA seen any interest or uptake of battery installations for energy storage? Do we have any, are we developing a plan to encourage battery installations for the various grid benefits they can provide? Let's see. Dan?
That one? Sure. Yeah, lots of good battery questions. One of my favorite topics. I love talking energy storage. It provides a lot of great and exciting opportunities coming up. We've definitely been watching that and watching the trends of battery pricing. Battery pricing is coming down. It still has a ways to come down, I think, still. You know, you don't want to, I don't want to be in it too early and paying too much for those batteries, but it's certainly coming down in a hurry. Batteries are typically really good for providing that maybe four, maybe six hours of energy storage. And so it really helps firm up a, a solar power supply on cloudy days. But it may not be ideal for carrying us all the way through the night quite yet. But there's also other forms of energy storage to look at. There's pumped hydro. There's, you know, could be some hydrogen technologies coming around, some interesting pneumonia technologies that are out there as well, different things that can provide that same energy storage kind of capacity. Now, one of the challenges and probably sound like a broken record here, but one of the challenges for us implementing battery storage is our contract or wholesale electric agreement with, with Tri-State. That does have limitations on how much energy storage that we can put in as well. And so that is also one of the reasons why we want that additional flexibility from Tri-State is be able to do some of these exciting new projects. If we see something that is very cost effective that we want to do. I think specifically you had asked a question, when we, now what programs we might be doing. One thing that we're, we're looking at is there, there are places where we do, we have high saturation of solar out on our grid. And so it would make sense that members might want to put batteries in so that they aren't exporting energy back out onto the grid. And if they have to use the battery to absorb the excess energy, boy, we as LaPlata Electric would sure love to have the ability to provide some sort of incentive so that we can control the discharge of that at the best time that when we need it. You know, and those could be, that might be an example at the customer level. There's, there's, there's things that could be done at a community level, things that could be done at the substation level. There's different, different cases that you could make justification on all those things there. So hopefully that, that hit on some of the questions that were asked there.
Hi Brendan, thanks for asking the question. Brendan is somebody I worked with in the past. So it's good to see him out here.
Awesome. Um, I'm just noting the time. And so at this point, we've still got a bunch of Q and A up, which is great, but I do want to open it up. If there are questions outside of power supply that folks are interested in asking. Again, feel free to type those in or raise your hands and we'll take the plunge and chat in person. So while we possibly have additional questions coming forward, we'll take this raised question. Are you looking at battery storage at substations? Oh, you were just mentioning that. But if so, how would that decision be made and what would the advantages be? Should get on the weeds a little bit with that.
Well, I'll lead in and then there could be an awful lot more said on this. But I'd say we're looking at it. It's sort of early on still. A lot of these things are going to depend on cost as well as the technology that we can tie together. But I would say it would, it would be quite likely at some point, you can expect the LPA will have some batteries at the substations. But try and predict what that point will be and exactly what substation Dan may know that. But we haven't got to that point yet. So Dan, why don't you fill it in?
I think you said it well, Brett. There's, we, we keep looking at those. In fact, something that you may not be aware of is that anytime we have a large capital project that we're looking at, we have to, there's times where we have to upgrade a line where it's a very skinny line right now. There's a development that went in. We have to upgrade that line. It's very expensive to do so. Sometimes some of those capital projects can be well over a million dollars. And when we get to larger projects like that, we definitely look at other technologies that we could use. Instead of upsizing things to serve the load, can we put something out there by the load to essentially reduce the load? Either distributed generation or energy storage. And, you know, we, we've looked at those and tried to pencil those out and also consider future growth. And we're always looking at those options. But there are some substations that, there's one substation I know of in particular that has one megawatt of solar sitting right at it. That would be a great candidate for, for putting some energy storage out there as well. And so we're keeping an eye on prices. We've even looked at some flywheel technologies that are, that are pretty interesting. Large containers full of rotating wheels that take a lot of inertia to get going. But once they're moving, they, they store that inertia can transmit that energy out as too. So.
Awesome. Thank you. And then this one comes from Sam King again. So it again has to do with thoughts on managing storage. And this one's just, I, I love it because it's something we can all engage in. So can people's vehicles be used to store power and sell back to the grid, stored during the day and sell back during the peak?
I, I feel guilty jumping in and answering part of all these, but I've been in this business for a long time, maybe about as long as Dan too. So sometimes you just have a little bit of information about too many things and not enough about anything when general. But part of the interest in electric vehicles is great. They're big batteries. They're going to be all over the place, we hope. So it's a possibility. However, that a lot of that's going to depend on the car companies themselves and the software that eventually is used to tie it together. Because you can't be discharging people's cars in their homes when they might need them. And there may be warranty issues about discharging the batteries too much. But it does make sense that if you had both the car companies and the software to tie utility and that you knew a person was also in agreement with this, that you would only reduce his battery down to a certain point at certain times. It does make some sense, but probably the more important part of it is when do you charge that battery? That's the thing that, you know, maybe even more useful than when you put the power back to the grid. Because you know the person's going to be home all night, but you don't want to charge it between 6:00 PM at night, 9:00 PM at night, but start charging it after that. Those are probably the more near-term things that would be more important than taking power back from the battery into the grid. And again, I'll look at Dan to see if he can fill in anymore on that and if anybody else wants to.
And one, one other thing I'll, I'll throw out there is that not only can a vehicle act as a battery by discharging their energy into the grid, but it can also be strategically used somewhat as a battery by when we actually charge it. And so controlled and managed charging is something we are already doing and looking to improve on, on how that looks in the future. We're, we're looking at platforms called Distributed Energy Resource Platforms. And distributed energy resources don't just consist of the generation that you might put out there. But it also consists of the different elements that you could control. Anything from smart water heaters to a prime example being the electric vehicles. Smart thermostats. smart thermostats, a variety of different things that you could look at out there that can help shape and sculpt your load. It may not discharge like a battery would, but you could certainly choose on when you charge. And that can sort of produce the same result.
Did just want to give you a heads up that we do have one raised hand.
Oh.
Yeah. In addition to the, the Q and A list, Dave Peters has his hand raised.
Excellent. Okay. Well, Dave's being bold, so we'll, we'll go with Dave and Drew, if you could unmute Dave and Dave, you've got three, up to three minutes, I believe.
Okay, can you hear me?
We've got you. Thank you.
So thank you for the update tonight. I think I listened to some, call it town halls over a year ago. My takeaway is there's still a lot of unanswered questions out there. But one thing I see is more LPA members are becoming concerned about the internal spending of LPEA. You know, we saw recently rate increases. The question has been asked on how much money is being spent between lobbyists, lawyers and consultants for the buyout. Never really gotten a straight answer. We know it's over a million, but maybe it's headed up towards 2 million right now. So my question is going forward, are you expecting the same burn rate, which is substantial, to look at buyout options? Or are you looking at cutting back? Cause I could tell you, you know, if you continue the current level of spending, you're going to get more and more comments from members in concern.
Great. Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Dave. Sorry. And I actually, I think this is a, let's definitely get to kind of legal costs in the future of that. But I also think it's really important to address kind of one of the other issues that you had woven in there, which is just the overall kind of budget and expenses and operational budget in LPA. And Carl has done some amazing work there. Joe alluded to this early on. So maybe Carl, if you want to highlight just some of the things you've been working on. And then kind of second chunk of that was looking at the rate increase. And maybe we can talk about why or where that comes from, because it's actually decoupled from some of these other issues. And then third, we'll tackle legal. Does that sound? So Carl, do you want to talk just kind of overall operational spending?
Sure. Yeah. Thanks for your question, Dave. As, as Joe pointed out, right now, our, what we would call controllable spending. So that's our payroll. That's our operations and maintenance costs. Those are our, the legal fees would be part of that. Or over $2 million under budget. Yes, we have spent more than $1 million on legal fees and consultants related to the pursuing alternative power supply. It's certainly not going towards 2 million. I can assure you of that. It's, it is, but it is over $1 million. That is true. And we have budgeted, the budget has not been finalized and approved, but we have budgeted to spend money in 2021. Also continuing to look at those options with the idea being that this is money we invest to save money for the members going forward. Now, as part of our budget, we have been set very strict guidelines by the board on what we can and can't spend. And my job as the head of finance to ensure those adhere to. All I'm, all I care about is the financial wellbeing of the co-op and the co-op is owned by the members. So what, right at the beginning, basically when we knew that COVID was going to be a big deal and that, you know, there was going to be economic pressure on, on our members and on the co-op, I challenged every single one of our staff to think not twice, but three times about any dime they wanted to spend of co-op money. And everyone has responded to it magnificently, as you can tell by the being over $2 million under budget. So believe me, Dave, I'm not, you know, trying to blow you off, but controlling our costs, that's my mission. That's what I do. And if I would not sign off on any expense that either wasn't aimed at improving our service, our reliability, or in, or in the case of these fees, reducing the cost to the members in the long term.
Thank you, Carl. I think one of the other things I'll just comment on that Carl and the finance team have really brought forward, kind of with a look at just kind of the backbone operating expenses has been, I would say it's like a, a change or a reframe in mindset at the company around how kind of the budget belongs to all and the expenses belong to all and everyone's accountable to it. So I think Carl and his team have put together a really incredible structure that involves everyone in kind of determining where they spend money, feeling accountable to that and ultimately finding lots of cost savings. And so that budgetary restructure, as we're looking ahead to kind of seeing what we've got for next year's budget from what the, the reports have been, are finding all kinds of pockets of money, are ways to save money.
Rachel, if I, go ahead, just. I, I just wanted to add that, that we've been more transparent on the budget than ever before too. And to your point, Rachel, you brought this up, but what Carl and the team did as well as the leadership team that you see on this, on this Zoom, is that the budget was kept in the CFO's office and wasn't broken up into divisions. So we broke up the budgets in each division so that Jerry and Dan and Drew and Hillary and others are more accountable to their specific budgets and watching cost control. That has never happened. So the amount of transparency and accountability is increased to manage those costs. And as Carl mentioned, saving our customers over $2 million is pretty remarkable and has not been done before. So there's, there's a large amount of cost control and accountability that is happening in these last, this last year.
You know, I, I'd also like to say that, you know, we hear this sometime and we don't really get many specifics. You know, we're not, we're not like a city government where we're filling potholes and buying library books and, and running rec programs. This is a 24/7 critical infrastructure company. The hospital and every, really every member is reliant on us for keeping the power going 24 hours a day. Dan mentioned a little, a little bit ago that, you know, some of our capital projects are a million dollars. Well, some of them are $20 million. We're looking at a budget tomorrow and looking at some of these capital projects. We're repairing lines that are 20, 30, 40 years old. That has to be done and people are expecting better delivery of power, more high quality power. And, and again, this is a co-op. We are not a investor owned utility. No one is putting any of this money in their pockets. And, and so this is a very expensive, complicated enterprise to run. And, and I think most people, most members recognize that.
Okay. Thanks. And I think that actually ties into kind of the other part of Dave's question, which was just kind of where, or maybe it wasn't part of your question, but I think it's something we've been working to highlight is just where that rate increase, kind of the rationale and justification behind that. And I think one of the, the big things that Joe just brought up is the need to pay for infrastructure and projects in an era where inflation or an era in the context where inflation is real. And we haven't seen a rate increase in four years. And so that is one place where that comes from. And then I guess, does anybody else want to tackle some of the other reasons for the, the rate increase?
Well, I would say, Rachel, inflation is really good that you would point that out. And that unfortunately, even if it's only going up 2% a year and our rates don't go up. And as Dan mentioned early, earlier, the amount of power selling particularly to residential, which is our highest income stream has the amount of energy to buy has been pretty flat. So there's been pressure on. And I also, before Jessica was brought on board, I think we were a bit understaffed and there was a bit, there was probably too much pressure on a lot of areas that are starting to be alleviated. So there, those reasons were all in there. The only change we made to rates within those last four years was because of a slight change Tri-State made to its stuff that affected our time of use. That was not a rate increase. That was just a change of things. And so I know there's been in the, in some people have mentioned, we have indeed had a rate increase in the four years, but it really wasn't.
Awesome. I was just gonna say, there's a really great, Hillary put together a really helpful, easy to understand explanation for the, the rate increase. And you can find that on the website. Um, great. Anyone else have anything for that? If not, there's some actually really interesting questions about some transmission and ownership. And if we were to shift power supply, what that looks like. Jessica?
Um, I just noticed that Werner has a follow up question to the one we're talking about, which I think is good because we just talked about it in regards to the budget and legal cost, well, that it would be helpful to outline the potential savings of a partial or full exit from Tri-State. So definitely we can work on that. We did, you know, we are modeling the, the, the partial buyout with Tri-State's contract. And, you know, just initially it would save about, you know, over $1 million a year for customers. And so if you, if you project that out to the life of, of what we get that for in the contract, and Dan can fill in the blanks. And I can't remember exactly what number, but several million dollars over time. So, you know, this, it's important and as Brett said, we see our neighboring co-ops like Delta Montrose and Kit Carson saving a lot of money for their members right away. And so it's our fiduciary responsibility to look at that as well. And if we can save millions of dollars right away, year one, then we should be doing that.
Dan, did you have anything to add to that or anyone else? And thanks for catching that question, Jessica. Okay. Great.
Actually, I would just add one thing because I am going to be the first one to. I'll be back.
Great. Well.
That's interesting that Hillary is the one line that that happens to once in a while. She gets that crazy static and then she drops and comes back and we can hear her again.
Attempt to be dramatic. No, I'll be back.
I think you need to come back with a mask on, dark figure.
Just, I was just thinking about Werner's question again about, you know, the savings. Of course, one of the reasons we are going through this effort, which really isn't that much fun, PUC cases, FERC cases and talking to our lawyers and stuff is because of the potential savings. The partial buyouts are, we're probably talking, you know, tens of millions, maybe $30 million in, in the stuff. So, you know, big numbers. The full exit, we may be talking $100 million, a couple hundred million dollars if, if it's able to eventually go through. So really big numbers. Yes, it's no fun to have to spend money year by year with lawyers. In addition, Tri-State is spending 10 times what we're spending on lawyers. And of course, we're a member of Tri-State, so we're spending that as well. It's too good for the lawyers, maybe not as good as it ought to be for the co-op members. I don't know what else we can do to continue to pursue these opportunities that are out there without working with the lawyers. It's our fiduciary responsibility in a sense that we're, we seem obligated to continue this battle until we learn if it's going to work or not, because the numbers potentially are enormous as well as the local economic benefits and the other things we've alluded to.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. We're going to take these two last questions and then move on to door prizes, if that's okay. So first from Karen McManus, is Tri-State responsible for all maintenance, replacement of and adding transmission lines and equipment?
I'll jump in here, I guess. The Tri-State is responsible for the maintenance and replacement of their lines, of their transmission lines. LPA also owns transmission lines. And so we would be responsible for the maintenance and the replacement.
Dan, just make it clear the difference between transmission lines, just special lines. I'm not sure people are going to know that.
Sure. Yeah. Trends, you know, if you're asking about transmission lines, normally I would think that would be the, the higher voltage lines that you're, you're seeing, not necessarily the run lines that run along the street that serve your house. Those would be what we call distribution lines. LPA definitely maintains and, and updates and Jerry's crews all handle the maintenance of those lines as well as LPEA owned transmission lines. And we're talking, when we say transmission, we're talking anything from 46,000 volts up to 115,000 volts would be what LPA would work on. Tri-State's lines are going to be anywhere from 115,000 volts up to 345,000 volts.
Awesome. Thanks all. And then we'll just pop down here to Lisa's question. How would large behind the meter solar projects such as what the city is planning change distribution and load? That's a big one. Oh, Dan, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Yeah, the city's definitely doing some, some large projects right now that they have planned. And what that's changing for the most part is less power flow going down those lines to serve those loads. There will definitely be times when the solar capacity could exceed the load at that facility. And we'll have power flowing back the other direction at, at that time. That's one of the great things about coupling solar with commercial loads is that typically commercial loads are on and running during the middle of the day, the same time the solar is producing. So that really works well and couples together well there. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not. If somebody else had a different take on what was being asked there, feel free to jump in.
Change distribution and load. Listen, did you have any follow-ups or did Dan get it? Try to see if the hand goes up. Oh, now I hit the wrong button. All right. Great. Um, cool. Well, let's, oh, I think, oh, there's only one other one that didn't get answered. Oh, I'm such a sucker. Okay. So not considering the economic benefits of local generation and increased resiliency, can local PV compete with purchased electricity? And I believe that is, yeah, a cost question.
Well, again, a simple question can get complicated in a hurry. This one, the answer is it kind of depends on the size in a sense. If you're building a small one megawatt system, it potentially would have tough time competing with what we could purchase from a wholesale provider or a, maybe even on the wholesale market if we ever were buying directly. If it gets larger, it gets less expensive. But on the other hand, like with a lot of things that a co-op should or could do, you give more weight to something that's local that might actually provide additional economic benefits in your community. So even if we could buy something far cheaper that was developed down near the Four Corners at a coal plant or something, or something smaller that we could do here, we would like to perhaps do both. We wouldn't want to have one done in exclusion with the other. I think all of our solutions will be some combination of things. But we would always like to do what we can when we get more local control, if we do, to provide the opportunity for more local generation. So yes, it can particularly compete in some ways. It depends, as Dan mentioned before, if it's the loads coming in at the same time when you, the solar is generating, it's good. As batteries become more generally available, it'll tie together as well. So it's again, one of those things where the question can get more complicated than a simple answer. The simple answer would be yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Rachel, did you see the question by Tamara Jocelyn? Did that show up on your screen or not?
Oh, about the Four Corners?
Yeah.
Oh, someone answered that. I thought really, really on, but yes, how could the big solar array project plan near the Four Corners Coal Plant impact us here locally?
And unless we were buying power from it, it, it probably wouldn't in any way that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'm closing us out there because my timer just dinged and I have a apple dehydration project going on. I have to go take out the oven. So let's see, just with that, we're going to bring up, sorry, Hillary. So let's see, just, um, with that, we're going to bring up, sorry, Hillary. If she, is Hillary back on?
I'm back. Do I sound like Darth Vader?
You got you. All right. Hillary, this is what everyone's been waiting for. Do you want to introduce the door prize drawing?
Yes. So we know you're all busy. So as a bit of a reward for spending an hour and a half with us this evening, we purchased some $50 gift cards from local businesses. And I drew two names during the session today. And I, I will probably mispronounce your names, but I apologize. But those cards are going to go to David Peroni and Tamara Jocelyn or Tamara Jocelyn. And so thank you all for attending. For David and Tamara, I will be, will be in touch with you via email. You can choose from a selection of gift cards and we'll arrange to get those mailed out to you. So thank you for attending everyone.
Awesome. And I'll just wrap it up with yet another thank you to each of you for spending some time with us. If you haven't had enough of this, you are more than welcome to join us every third Wednesday, um, which includes tomorrow. Starting at nine AM and continuing into the, the late hours of the evening for our monthly board meetings. You can join when we meet back in person. You're welcome to come join us at LPA headquarters. But you are always invited to join us remotely via Zoom. Public comments take place at the, the onset of the meeting. So if you're interested in making public comment, please attend then. If you're unable to do that, we always invite, or just if you want to communicate in additional ways, we always invite emails or phone calls to discuss your questions. And you can find, oh, thanks Hillary. So Hillary's sharing details for our next board meeting, which again is tomorrow. And then an upcoming finance and audit committee. And so that's where again, to that transparency around budgets and, and really to get in the weeds and have some pretty interesting questions answered. We encourage and invite you all to attend there. And then Hillary's got, um, an email. Look at how good she is for all the comments or questions you might have. So please send us anything that you've got. You can also find all of the directors, our emails and phone numbers are up on the board page. We love connecting with you, so please feel free to, to shoot us questions. I'd like to give a special thank you to directors, Coler McGinnis, Kristen Skihan and Tim Wheeler for joining us. I'm sorry, I didn't acknowledge you earlier. And again, as a reminder, all of the questions that you posed, which were really insightful and astute will be noted and published, kind of compiled, published back and made available. So, um, this has been really helpful, I think, letting us know kind of where questions are and where people's understanding is. And, um, hopefully the next town hall meetings go as well as this one. And hopefully this is just the first of a whole string of conversations. So thank you again and have a great night.
Thanks, everyone.